Started, we'll start with a roll call.
Nope.
Nope, we've got to do the, read the statement, excuse me.
This meeting will be conducted by audio and video conference without the physically present quorum of the Rock Island City Council due to the disaster declaration issued by Governor Pritzker. Because of this order related to COVID-19 public health concerns affecting the state and the city, the mayor has determined that in-person meeting at City Hall with all the participants is not practical or prudent. Alderman and staff may not be all physically present at the City Hall due to the disaster, and physical attendance at City Hall may be limited. To participate remotely during the public comment or public hearing portion of the meeting, please join by phone at 1-414-436-7965 and use PIN number 719-534-137 pound.
All right, now we can do roll call.
Alderman Clark. Alderman Hurt. Alderman Hurt. Alderman Spaghetti.
Present.
Alderwoman Swanson.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Pulis. Alderman Geenan.
Present.
Mayor Tombs.
Here.
Alderman Hurt. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Stand for the pledge allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, item number six, public comment. Is there anybody out there for public comment that would like to speak in the audience and/or virtually? Not see anything in the audience here, anybody virtually, pound six or star six will unmute your microphone. Not hear anybody, so we will then move on. Item number seven.
Minutes from the October 19, 2020, City Council goal-setting session in the October 26, 2020 City Council meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Five zero motion carries.
All right, item eight, Rock Island update. Couple items here. Virtual tuneful Tuesday, there's a mouthful. The Rock Island Public Library presents McComb singer-songwriter Chris Villo in a special online concert. The concert will be livestreamed via Facebook Live at noon on Tuesday, November 10, 2020. The award-winning folk singer will perform pivotal songs that inspired and sustained the landmark civil rights movement. Intermixed with the music, he will discuss the impact music had on this important social cause. Holiday garbage collection, garbage and recycling and yard waste collection schedules will be on normal schedule during the week of Veterans, Veteran Day holiday. The drop-off center located at Millennium Waste 13606 Knoxville Road in Myland will be open on Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The City of Rock Island offices will be open. The Winter Night Winter Lights exhibit. The outdoor garden at the Quad City Botanical Center will be in the winter bloom with over 130,000 glowing lights showcasing their largest light display yet. New areas of the outdoor gardens will be lit, including the children's garden. Explore the lawns, ponds, pocket gardens of the outdoor light exhibit. Open every night, including Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve, and the night of New Year's Day, closed Thanksgiving and Christmas. Tickets will be purchased, must be purchased online, tickets must be purchased online for timed entrance every 30 minutes. Admission is $8 for adults, $4 for youth, and free for children under two. A small processing fee will be added to all tickets. All events have limited capacity and are subject to change based on state mandates governing public health. That's all we have for that. Item number nine.
Mayor Tombs will close a regular meeting and open a public hearing regarding a request from the Jackson Group, Demarius and Shonda Washington for an amendment to the approved special use permit for four apartments at 3204 27th Avenue.
All right, we'll close the regular meeting, open the public hearing. And would you, people like to speak about the process or what you're looking for at all? It's your choice, you do not have to, but, and then we'll have an opportunity for people to speak for or against, okay? If you don't mind, go to the microphone, you can pull that around, let people know who you are. Project.
Shonda Washington with the Jackson Group and Demarius Washington, oral surgery, so excuse him, please.
You're fine.
So with this special use permit, we're just looking to carry it over, we're looking to purchase the property from the current owners, which is Route 66, and continue with the residential apartments as they are, and also have the use of the downstairs area.
Okay, very good. So then what I need to do is ask if there's anybody in the audience or virtually that opposes this project. Star six, unmute mics, can't speak. Star six, or anybody in the audience that wants to speak against this? I'm not hearing any there.
I have some, I have some questions.
Yes.
I'm not against it, so would you, can we ask questions then?
Well, I'm going to ask against and I ask for, but yes, you will be able to ask, ask, no, did you sign, you had to sign a sheet up, right? Did you fill out?
Yes, I did, signed up a sheet.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Yes, sir, I did fill out the form.
You did fill out the form.
At the, at the clerk's office.
Okay, all right, so the answer is yes, you can. Can you give us your name, please, and then you can ask?
My name is Robert Steber.
Okay. Answer your question.
Okay, well, first of all, I would like to welcome the Jackson Group and Mr. and Mrs. Washington to the neighborhood. One of my questions was the, and I'm not sure who answers this one. In the letter that I got from the Economic Development Department, they said that form indicated that they wanted to have a private business office and storage area for their property rental business on the first floor, whereas the, the agenda minutes state that they're only looking for a special use permit for the four apartments. I guess, are they still going to have an office and, and a storage area? And shouldn't that be part of the special use permit?
Yes, we're going to have Miles answer that.
Hello, sir, I'm the Planning and Redevelopment Administrator. It does, it still includes that office space and everything in the downstairs, so if there's a slight discrepancy somewhere, I'm afraid that must be a typo, but what the ordinance will actually say, talking about what is allowed in the special use permit, it does include what you described that went out in that notice letter. So for those at home, or for those who are not familiar with the property, we're talking about the former aqualetics club, so the structure that's there present as the primary building that you see, indicated with labels as the proposed office and storage. It's a two-story building, so the upper story has been converted into apartments, and the Jackson Group just wants to continue the use of those as they are right now. The lower part of the building consists basically of old locker rooms and then kind of an open community room space, and that community room space and those lockers is what they're talking about using for the office and storage space, so a space pretty well suited to that and frankly, not much else, so.
Okay, that answers my question, it just didn't say that on the agenda, that's why I was raising the question. I guess one of the other questions I have for Mrs. Jackson is, is there going to be a lot of truck traffic concerning the storage of your, for your, for your business?
So first, I'll say thank you for the welcome, Robert, but to answer your question directly, no, there will not be a lot of truck traffic. We don't anticipate any unless it's something for service of the buildings that are there, otherwise there will not be any commercial vehicles coming onto the property.
Okay, great. We're just a small, dead-end neighborhood street, so that's why I was, wanted to ask the question. I guess, my last is not a question, but it's just a comment for Mrs. Washington. Most of us have to back out of our driveways to get into the public right-of-way of the street, whereas you have the advantage that you're coming out of your driveway headfirst. I guess, one of the things I wanted to point out to you is, as you come up your driveway, you'll see a stop sign. The air, the road to the left, which is just an oil and chip, little bit of asphalt road, is a public road, which is 27th Avenue. So technically, I know there's only four houses, but those people have the right-of-way in the street, so just wanted to pass that along, that it's just not a clear shot up out of your driveway on the 32nd Street, because the people to the west, which is 27th Avenue, actually probably would have the right-of-way even over me or any of the other neighbors there.
Okay, well, I appreciate that information, and we'll be sure to cascade that on down too, to any tenants as well.
Okay, I guess to help, one of the things too would be to help the line of sight where the fire hydrant is, there on the corner of, of the driveway. If you wanted to clear that area south of the fire hydrant, I don't know, eight, 10 feet of some of the brush, there would be more visual to the west that you can see if there's any traffic coming down 27th Avenue to get on the 32nd Street, so you might think about that, so.
Thank you, something to consider, I appreciate that.
You bet, all right, that's all I had to, had to say in my comments, and thank you very much, I'm done.
Thank you very much, thank you for the support. Is there anybody else out there that, is anybody, I'll finish, is there anybody that would like to speak against it? That's where I was at before, anybody want to speak against it? Hearing none, is there anybody out in virtual that would like to speak in favor of this? Anybody want to speak in favor? Hearing none, I guess that would conclude it unless there's anything else you wish to say, either one of you? You bet, thank you. I'm old enough, I remember the aqualetic and spent a lot of time there, kind of missed that part of it, but, so thank you for your commitment to Rock Island and investing.
Appreciate this time, thank you.
But thank you. All right, I will close the public hearing and reopen the council meeting.
Okay, and lines and moves to, to approve the amendment to the approved special use permit as recommended with the stipulations as stated.
Spaghetti seconds.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hurt. Still not online. Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Alderman Pulis.
Aye.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Five zero motion carries.
All right, we're item number 10.
Presentation of the Financial Management Report for the Third Quarter 2020.
All right, Stephanie.
Hello.
Okay, we got Linda, virtually, and we got Stephanie here also, so great.
Yes, I think Stephanie's there to help me out, just in case. I do believe I need to present my screen.
I think Tim will bring up the presentation.
Oh, okay, so I don't need to present it?
Yeah, I don't know if he knows that.
Yeah, he could ask me to present it, but if he brings it up, that's fine.
Okay, Linda, can you see the presentation?
No, I, I have it on my computer, so I have a second screen.
Okay. So give us just, yeah, give us just a second, I'll tell you when to start, and I will keep up with you. I've done it a few times, so I'll know where you're at.
Okay, thank you.
He's bringing it up again, and... We're almost ready to go, and I think we're ready.
Okay.
All right.
Longest part?
Yep, all yours.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. I am Linda Barnes, Accounting Supervisor in the Finance Department, and tonight I am here to present the Third Quarter Financial Management Report, ending September 30th, 2020. So let's get started. First schedule on page two is the revenues, expenditures, and net position for each of the funds of the city. The first set of funds are the governmental funds. Some funds are grouped together under certain categories. A prime example would be the TIP funds that are listed under Special Revenue. The majority of governmental funds are supported by tax revenues such as property tax, sales and income tax, gaming tax, to name a few. Other sources of support includes grants and some user fees. The largest governmental fund is the General Fund. The budgeted revenue for calendar year 2020 is 3.37.9 million dollars. As of September 30th, we have received 59% of the General Fund revenues. This is below the target percentage of 75% for the nine-month period. And just to get some perspective, at the same period last year, total revenue receipts were at 67% of the budget. Of course, we know the reduction in revenues can be attributed to the effects of COVID. On the expenditure side of the General Fund, the budget is also 37.9 million dollars. That's what you call a balanced budget, while actual expenditures for the period is 26 million or 69%. Another item, the other governmental section, is the Motor Fuel Tax Rebuild Illinois Fund. This is a grant distributed by the State of Illinois for capital projects related to transportation. Actual receipts during this nine-month period total $859,000, which represents the first and second entitlements. These Illinois funds will be dispersed twice each year over a three-year period. Rock Island is expected to receive approximately $2.5 million. Any easy questions on this page? If not, the next page includes the remainder of the city funds. The first section is proprietary fund, is divided into two categories. The first category, category is enterprise. The major enterprise funds are comprised of Public Works Utility Funds and the Parks and Recreation Fund. These funds are supported mainly by charges for services such as use of water, sewer, and refuse. The water fund expense budget includes $3.5 million in carryover from the prior year for construction purposes. Next section under proprietary funds are internal service funds. Revenue for equipment maintenance, maintenance and repairs reflects billing for eight months, which is on target for the benchmark in August. Next, the fiduciary, fiduciary fund includes the Fire and Police Pension Funds. The pension boards met last month for the quarterly meeting for various cash and investment reports were presented for board approval. And the last line, total sitting position, shows that the city has received 67 million or 61% of the budgeted revenue, and expenditures total 71 million or 55% of budget. Any questions at this point? All right, we will go to page four. Page four highlights all the departments that make up the General Fund, including support departments like General Administration, Human Resources, and Finance. The major ones are Police, Fire, and Public Works. Again, the target percentage is 75%. The 26 million in expenditures is slightly under the benchmark at 69%, which is good for expenditures. All right, next, starting on page five, we have the charts and graphs, State and Local Tax Revenue Analysis Report. So what you see here are the amounts of revenue received through September 30th and annualized projections. Now normally, this is a pretty good indicator of where we will end up at the end of the year, however, this year, as we all know, is not quite the same scenario. So let's look at the first two categories, income tax and replacement tax. So the projected annual revenue for both is over the budgeted amounts by a total of $200,000. And then we go on to the next two charts, sales tax and local option sales tax receipts. Now, as noted last quarter, Stephanie stated that 20% of sales tax meters are bars and restaurants. Projections indicate we will miss budget on these two, and future months might be below normal. Again, any questions before we go on to the next page? All right, well, we do have some good news on page seven. Use tax has been trending upwards since March. This is due in part to the online sales tax impact. Current projections indicate that the revenue will exceed the budget by $300,000. So there, there is a little of good news. However, on the other end of the spectrum, municipal utility tax and telecommunications tax continue to decrease for various reasons. As mentioned last quarter, utility tax can be weather-dependent, for example, more efficient home, use less energy. Telecommunication tax on the next page, the projected annual revenue is $103,000 less than budget. Now, according to an article in Chicago Tribune, this continued decline can be attributed to a drop in landlines. All right, last two, local food beverage tax. This is our 1.5% locally collected sales tax, and it follows the trends of the sales tax and local option tax. Gaming tax, with the reopening of the casinos, 510,000 has been received this quarter and 1.2 million year-to-date. However, the projections indicate receipts will be 2 million less than budget. So in total, estimated revenue loss for these highlighted taxes is $2.3 million for 2020, which is a slight improvement from last quarter estimated revenue loss of $2.7 million. Any questions before the last two pages? All right, so the last two reports provide information related to city investments. Total investments as of September 30th, 2020 is $27.7 million between different funds. The graph provides the trend over time where the city has been in their cash position. And the last page provides the interest rates for each of the funds over a 17-month period. All right, so that is the end of my presentation, because I know everybody's ready for the budget presentation.
All right, assumed, is it, any questions, council have any questions? Hearing none, then we will move on to item number 11.
Presentation of the Calendar Year 2021 Budget.
Linda, is Linda giving this to?
No, I will do this.
Okay.
All right, so tonight I have the honor of presenting to you an overview of the proposed 2021 budget. I do have to start off by saying, as many of you know that are listening, the budget is a year-long process, and it's also, it's a lot of work, and this is the budget that was at a point in time on October 30th, and it has changed since then. So we continue to work on the budget, and we'll talk about what's contained in the budget and what the next steps are as well. So we do have a lot to cover. After we do review the goals, we are going to review the draft of the total budgeted revenues and expenditures for all the city funds, and as I said, this was as of what the budget stood at October 30th. And then we will focus on the General Fund, both expenditures and revenues, and then we'll touch on some of our enterprise funds, along with discussing the proposed 2020 levy. So budgeted goals, so our first directive of the budget process is to prepare balanced budgets, and we always have to touch bases on what a balanced budget mean. It doesn't always mean that revenues exceed expenditures, but it generally does mean that, and there are some exceptions, such as available fund balance in which to cover the expenditures. And then also, we have to keep in mind that our budget is presented on a budgetary basis as opposed to an accounting basis, and I won't dive into debits and credits and all that kind of stuff and T-accounts and freak people out, but we do budget expenses that, from an accounting standpoint, are reclassified onto the balance sheet. And a great example is principal, so when we pay principal on debt, whether it's an IEP a loan in the water fund or the wastewater fund, that principal is actually money that we've already gotten in the past, that's cash that we owe, so it's actually on the balance sheet as a liability. But yet, when we're talking about the budget today, it is reported as an expense, and so just, it's kind of the difference between budgetary and accounting basis, so we just have to keep that in mind. So some of the city's funds have had challenges, and it is management's goal to keep financial impacts to a minimum and to continue to provide the services that our businesses and residences expect from us. Also, very important, Stephanie word, is fiscal responsibility, so it's always our goal to keep fiscal responsibility in mind when we're developing a budget. We have weathered fiscal challenges in the past, but it's so important to maintain our current position and to, at a minimum, maintain that position and improve our financial position in the future. All right, let's look at some pretty colors and pie charts. So expenditures by fund, proposed citywide is $119,747,574. Now, this is actually less than our last year's actual fiscal activity, which was 122.9 million, so almost 122. which was 122.9 million, so almost 123 million. So we are presenting a budget with almost $4 million less expenditures than the prior year. So this chart captures spending across nine departments of the city. Forty, four-zero, funds across the city as well. The largest pie chart, top right there, general fund, green, represents 39.7 million. The second largest part is several funds that are grouped together that are public works utilities funds, and those are water, sewer, sometimes we call it wastewater, stormwater, and refuse at 27 million even. Economic development, you see that on the left, a blue, a blue chart now includes nine active TIF districts. So when I presented this last year, there was only seven. So now we have Heather Ridge and Century Woods, which are performing and generating increment as a result of the improvements that have already been made out there. All other, always a group of funds, just to let you know, that includes the marina, the Martin Luther King funds, the gaming fund, and our internal service funds. And when we say internal service funds, those are the funds that serve internally the other funds of the city, that could be fleet being one of them. We are self-insured, so we have our self-insurance liability fund, our health insurance fund. So those are our internal service funds. So same big number, 119.7 million, but different pie slices. So this is those expenditures by category. Sometimes when you're talking to city staff, you might hear the word object code. It breaks down the total citywide expenditures in categories rather than function. The largest slice of this pie chart is personnel costs, as it always is. That makes up 45.7% of our total expenditures and is 54.8 million. And this is up from last year's presentation about 3.2% in total. So some of that is our bargaining contracts. A large part of that is our pension costs that continue to increase. But yes, it's up 3.2% from last year. The next pie is services, and it's 25.1 million, and that's down. It was 28 million last year. Transfers are about 7.6% of expenditures. And then debt service is a little over 10% of our total expenditures there, top left, 12.5 million. So total budgeted revenue citywide for all funds is 109,596,355. Charges for services is the largest category after other. They're about the same, so charges for services is 25.4 million dollars and accounts for 23% of our revenue. The majority of our charges for services is in our enterprise funds, water, wastewater, refuse, and the like. And then a large part of other, that 26.5 million dollar slice, is the internal service and fiduciary funds activity. Property taxes on the left there, 20.4 million. This is not only just what we're, what we're talking about of a proposed property tax levy, but it also represents the property taxes that come into the TIF, the increment that's captured for, to support programs in those TIF districts. You will notice that revenue is less than expenses. And again, budget is a work in progress, so it will change as we go forward in the coming days and weeks. And then before I turn to the next slide, notice that pie labeled local state taxes, bottom left, 23.9 million. And we'll dive into some details of that revenue source. So state and local taxes make up 21.8% of our total revenue, which is down from last year, which was 23%. The largest portion for 2021 is not that first line this year. It's actually the second line, I didn't reorder those, but sales and use, 4.3 million. Locally collected home roll gas tax makes up the smallest portion down there at the bottom, 0.5 million, down a little bit from this year's budget. And then just a reminder, beginning with the 2020 budget, we do transfer that tax to another fund called a capital improvements fund for streets. And so anything that we get is transferred to support street projects. Since we are talking state and local tax, this is a good time to move on to the general fund budget. The last few years balancing the general fund has been a challenge. As always, the budget season begins with requesting that directors attempt to maintain overall budgeted expenditures, you know, keep them even. And this is due to projected general fund revenues being what they are and then offset by our naturally increasing costs, which tend to increase faster than our revenues. Most of our costs, you know, as well, look at that, is related to personnel. Good also to remember that at the time that we're, you know, handing out guidelines and beginning to work on our budget is early summer. And we have several presentations with council where we are reviewing the police and fire actuary reports. And so that's a big part of our budget, we know, and what that employer contribution, the minimum contribution that is expected from the city next year. The state has imposed some budget challenges over the last few years, and this table displays some of those changes along with some other impacts to our general fund budget. Just looking at that 2021 column, we do have a continued projected decline of PPRT. That's a corporate replacement tax. The state does continue to withhold 5% of the LGDF revenues income tax. And they also withhold one and a half percent of our local option sales tax. And then I added another row down there, COVID-19. So obviously, you know, the pandemic has affected our, both our revenues and our costs. Last year and the year before, we did talk about the P-25 radio financing project. That project has been completed and paid off, I'm very excited about that. You know, there was a time when, when we anticipated borrowing for our share of that buy estate cost and, and, you know, we paid for that out of our reserves. And so that is done, so we're happy about that. All right, so let's keep talking general fund, and I mentioned police and fire pension costs. It is a challenge with our rising personnel costs. Over 70% of our overall operating costs are related to personnel. And that's what you would expect, we are in the business of providing service, and it does take staff and people to provide those services. The majority of our employees are subject, subject to collective, collective bargaining contracts, which do have some negotiated pay increases included. So for 2021, the city's IMRF contribution rate increased 13%. So now for IMRF employees, we used to pay 9.89% per pensionable dollar, and now it's going to 11.22%. Police and fire pension costs also continue to increase and will likely continue to do so as we point towards a 90% funding target by the year 2040. So for this table that you do see on the screen, the increase over this time period for police and fire is 3.7 million. But it's also so important to note that police and fire pensions are state mandated, state mandated. They are defined by the state. It's not that the city can change, you know, the vesting terms or the payouts or what police and fire pensioners can earn. But they are earned by our current and former members of the police and fire departments as part of their compensation to provide for the safety and well-being of the citizens of Rock Island. And we do stand by our obligation to fund that. So as we work to balance the general fund budget, it's incorporated in four areas. As we talk about budget solutions, we always try to think of them, whether they're permanent or temporary, and hopefully have a mix of both of those. Expenditure reductions mostly will likely include a delay in filling positions in consideration of eliminating some continued delay in vehicle purchases. For revenues, we're always looking to see what we can do to support the revenues, whether it's a new revenue that's being considered by council or increasing the revenues that we currently assess or charge. And the final bullet point there is that's, is the use of reserves. And the next meeting, you will be reviewing the financial policies again. And, you know, as a reminder, they do call for us to maintain a 60- to 90-day reserves. And in recent years, we've been able to maintain that, and it's certainly helped us this year in the pandemic. This slide is a multi-year history of our FTEs. FTEs standing for full-time equivalent, so it's not necessarily people. But it's, you know, it's, you know, if I were a quarter-time person, I'm a .25 FTE, so I'm a quarter of a person. But over time, we have continued to decrease our employees that are supporting the departments and contain currently in the 21 budget is a small reduction. Some departments, you know, as we'll talk about next week in the budget workshops, may have increased their staff. For instance, Public Works, you know, has budgeted for an increase in staff to support the arsenal contract. But other departments such as Parks has decreased their staff, in part due to efficiency and operations, but really more so in an effort to balance their budget. So total general fund, this slide represents revenues for Fund 101 and the special funds that make up the general fund. So there's a little note there at the bottom of some of the other funds that are added to Fund 101 for this slide. And total budgeted revenues are 36.1 million, and that is a 1.9 million dollar reduction from last year's adopted budget or 4.9% reduction. Expenditures right now in the budget total 39.7 million dollars, and that's a 1.2 million dollar increase or an even 3%. You can see most of that increase is in the personnel area. Back to some pie charts, so we'll dive into the detail of that general fund expenses of 39.7 million. On this slide, you see the departments of the general fund, both the percentage of the total and the dollar amount of our total. So police constitutes the largest share at 42% or 16.6 million. Fire is 28% and 11.1 million, and Public Works makes up 14% of the budget. So between those three, 84% of the general fund spending is on the core service of police, fire, and public works, so 84%. Another way to look at that 39.7 million is by object code or category. And 78% of the budget is for personnel expenses, that's the 31 million dollar slice. The next largest category is services, which is 15%. So let's dive into the components of the personnel budget. The largest category of personnel is salaries, as you would expect, followed by pension. So pension expense includes not just police and fire, now we spent a lot of time talking about that, but it's also IMRF and FICA and Medicare. Pension expense represents 30% of total personnel costs and translates to 57 cents for each salary dollar. And of note, last year, that was 53 cents. The third largest component is health insurance at 3.2 million. So these three portions, salary, pension, and health, make up 92.8% of personnel expenditures. So here's our personnel by department. 24.9 million of the 31 million is related to public safety, police and fire. This is 79.5% of the total. The next largest is Public Works at 8%, and then community and economic development, which is 4.5%. All right, so leaving the general fund and going on to the utility funds, the next three slides will focus on Public Works Enterprise Fund, Parks, and then Library. So Parks and Library are both supported by property taxes at different levels. And then after we review these, we'll move on to property taxes. So recall that there are different types of funds in government accounting. Enterprise funds are also known as business-type funds, meaning that their accounting is more like what you would see in a business. They are generally self-supporting, so charges for services make up the majority of their revenues. The wastewater fund is worth pointing out on this slide as it is the largest of the enterprise funds at 12.9 million dollars in planned expenditures next year. 5.3 million of that 12.9 million is related to debt service, mostly our low-interest IEPA loans. Their charges for services make up 97% of their operating revenues. Park and Recreation is also an enterprise fund here in the city and is made up of several departments, such as our two golf courses, the Whitewater Junction facility, and RIFAC. In addition to user fees, this fund does receive support from property taxes. Of the fund's 5.4 million dollars in revenues, property taxes make up 36%. Staff have made great strides in reducing their expenses over the past few years, which you will hear more about next week. Of the 6.36 million in expenditures that you see here on this slide, personnel makes up 37.3% of their total budget. And then we have the library. So the library fund is a governmental fund and is therefore supported by taxes, so property taxes mostly. And then they do charge some very limited user fees. Proposed expenditures for next year total 2.8 million, 300, 2.2 million, 832,757, and their revenues are 2,606,000. The property, the proposed property tax is 2.2 million or 83% of their budget. And then their personnel costs are 64% of their budget. So property taxes. Property taxes are indeed an important revenue source for the city. And since we have referred to property taxes that are budgeted, I did want to point out a couple of things. So first, total property tax revenue related to the levy is proposed, and I emphasize the word proposed, 14,389,999, and this is compared to last year's 13,375,456, which when extended was 13,377,000. 56% of this proposed levy is allocated to supporting police and fire pensions, so that blue slice of just a little over 8 million. This table breaks down last year's levy and this year's proposed levy by component. So general fund operations at the top there, general fund, police, and fire would receive 70% of the property tax levy. You can see that the library and the three components of Parks are proposed to have no increase. The last two years, these two funds received a 2% increase, and the year before that, a 1.83%. And it's very important to note that the library has requested of city council to increase their levy by 4.99%. Included in this table is the city's property valuation, the kind of across the bottom there, which is part of the formula to calculate a taxing body's property tax rate. We are anticipating a 1.25% increase, you see that on the far right column towards the bottom. And it is important to note that sometimes that final evaluation is a, is a different number than when we're talking about it at the levy time. Historically, it, it ends up being more, but you have to come up with an estimate. So last year is 1.41% increase was our final assessed valuation change. This slide shows our tax rate by collection year, a historical schedule that, that dates all the way back to the mid-eighties. In the early nineties, the rate reached a high point of 4.1249. And before the 2017 levy, for quite And before the 2017 levy, for quite some time, it had remained flat. The levy to support 2021 is estimated to be a tax rate of 2.921. So that's putting us back where we were in the late 1900s for 1900s, yeah, 1999. EAV history. So this slide does show our EAV history back to 2003. For 2020, the increase is slightly more than last year's tentative increase. And while the growth has been slow, it does show a positive trend, which is good. So again, there are six portions to our property tax levy. And the last column depicts the proposed 2020 levy of 14.4 million. Fire and police pension costs are provided to us through the actuary. And as I mentioned earlier, mentioned earlier, will likely continue to grow. And you can see from the very bottom portion of that slide that the general fund shrunk for quite some time. So in 2011, it was close to a $4 million amount that supported the general fund. And then in 2016, it had fallen to a very low level. So we're still not to where we were in the past as far as the general fund support, but you can see the different components. You don't see as much that police or Parks and Library stayed very flat during this time. When we talk about taxes, you know, we need to always refer to our overlapping tax districts, you know, and unfortunately with having a name that matches the county, great county we live in, however, we share the same name. And so we tend to be blamed for the entire property tax bill. So it's good to review what our portion is of a residence or businesses' property tax bill. So there are other layers of governments. We call them overlapping tax districts. They include the county, the township, the school district, airport, college, and the transit authority. And each taxing district establishes their own levy. This table shows a six-year history of the breakdown of a tax bill and shows that for the 2019 levy, so the one that council approved and we filed next door at the county last December payable this year, the city of Rock Island's portion of the bill was 21.3%. And when we combine that with the library, that would be 25.4%. So about a quarter of the bill comes to the city and the library. In comparison, the 2004 city and library levy was 23.8%. The largest part of the bill is the school district. So for the bills that we're paying this year, their portion is 49.8%. So what does this mean for a homeowner in the city of Rock Island? With a tax rate of 2.912 proposed, the city's portion of the taxes would equal $798. I feel terrible to say, but that middle column, I did make a mistake. So Stephanie does make mistakes. That was actually the 2018 levy dollars. So if you looked back at last year's, that was the number for that. So I wanted to provide what the difference is. So as we saw in a previous slide, the tax rate we see in Rock Island Township this year is 2.7497. And instead of the 2.657 that you see at the top of that middle column, right under the year 2019. So with that, the, the proposed annual change is $46.88 or $3.91 a month. So 46.88 would be the change year over year. This is for a home assessed at $100,000 and owner occupied, so getting the, the homestead exemption. 46.88 annually, annual change, $3.91 a month. So in conclusion, again, it's my honor to present to you the draft 2021 budget. It is ongoing work for sure. Some of the actions, you know, that we have taken or will take are difficult, but through them, you know, we should be able to provide reserves and services to the city. It's weird to stand here in a room with not all of our directors and staff here, but I know they're listening. And, you know, I just want to thank all of them, staff and directors alike, for their countless hours that they spend on the budget. This has been, you know, for sure, in my 18 years of doing those, one of the most challenging. And we're not done yet, but we still have, have some work to do. And speaking of work, you guys have a long night ahead of you next Monday. So we do have our budget workshop where each of the departments provides their presentation of their budget and their initiatives and such. We will have items on the agenda on the 23rd of November and then moving towards a proposed budget ordinance to be presented on December 14th for a first reading, along with a tax levy as well. And that is it. Any questions for me?
Council, any other questions?
No, just, just a statement, thank you, because I know the, the amount of work that goes into this. I've seen some of the reports and I, we can't thank you enough because that's, what people don't see behind the scenes is the hours and the countless hours that go into this and trying to make it as less painful as possible. And this year did not really help us out with the, with the, or our income, not what we had anticipated or budgeted for. So thank you to also all the other department heads who managed to keep their expenditures lower than what they should be for the third quarter. And I, I kudos to them.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Not very well. That is better, but still not as good as you've been. But we can, we can, we can hear you.
Okay, how about now?
Perfect.
There, good. Technology, it's fun stuff tonight. I, I do have one question for Stephanie, but I'd just like to echo what Alderman Pulis just said. Thank you for everything that you've done. Gonna miss having you make these presentations. And, you know, half of us on this council have been here since 2017. When you see that, that line in the graph start going upward, and it has not been a fun ride and it's certainly not over with yet. But I appreciate everything that our staff has done to help us through this process. My question was, as most people are aware, there has been much debate within the federal government about passing some legislation that would help compensate for lost revenue for local governments. You know, crystal ball, if something were to be passed by the federal government, would that be helpful in this upcoming budget? Or is that more so for dealing with the hole that we dug this year?
That would be extremely helpful. And, you know, as we, as we look at next year's budget, we always have to think about what our reserves are now. So that's a, a big impact to the general fund. We've taken steps in the general fund in 2020 to reduce expenditures. And we're in the process of, of recognizing additional expenditure reductions as, as we saw from Linda's report earlier. The Cure Act funding is certainly going to provide some relief as we can use public safety, personnel expenses to claim the allocation that the city is, is set to receive. So we'll be finishing that paperwork up in the next seven to 10 days before the December 1st deadline. But revenue loss would, you know, would be much appreciated. And, you know, certainly with a city with a casino, that's, you know, something that has added some gray hairs to my head.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I too. I don't want to be repeat, repeat too much, but diddle what everybody said. Thank you very much for the department heads and, and their staff even. Makes no difference. It's tough to make these cuts. It's tough to keep on trying to find ways to, to, to save, but we appreciate it. I know that the city council, when we set goals, sometimes they're lofty. There's, there's a price tag to them and it makes it difficult to follow the, the goals when you have a tight budget. And so there is a, can be a conflict there. And I appreciate everybody's efforts toward that and working to make the city better, smarter, more efficient. And, and I know that they'll keep doing that. They always do a great job. And so thank you. It's not easy. It's not unrecognized. I know by myself and a number of the council members, if not all of them, I think recognize that. And so thank you. Stephanie, and then you especially, you know, I know that you've been here late at night, a lot of hours trying to crunch numbers and, and be the, the best steward you can with the taxpayers' money. So thank you very much for that. And I know you're, you're moving on. You're gonna help us through the budget, but appreciate that too, those efforts. But it, it doesn't go unknown and unrecognized. So thank you. All right. If there's no other comments or questions, we'll continue. We're at item number 12.
Special ordinance removing the handicap parking space in front of 2960 12th Street. Second reading.
Alderman's forgets moves to approve the ordinance.
Parker second.
Thank you. It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Heard, did you ever get online? No? Alderman Spaghetti?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 13.
A special ordinance banning parking in the 26th Avenue Court cul-de-sac. Second reading.
Alderman Parker moves to approve the ordinance.
Swanson seconds.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Spaghetti?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 14.
Special ordinance rezoning the two adjacent properties at 319 11th Street and 1109 4th Avenue from R6 multifamily residence to B3 community business. Second reading.
Alderman Pulis makes a motion to approve the ordinance.
Spaghetti seconds.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Spaghetti?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 15.
A special ordinance authorizing the sale of the city-owned property at 1013 8th Avenue, parcel 092271-A, parcel 0734441011 to LaShanta Williams for $10 plus closing cost. Second reading.
Pulis will make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Spaghetti seconds.
They're moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
I don't have my list in front of, I don't have my list in front of me. Mark, will you just make my motions tonight?
Yes. Okay. I got you. All right. Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 16.
Special ordinance authorizing the sale of the city-owned property at 614 12th Street, parcel 097647, PIN 0734452001, Tomasco and Letitia Talia Faro for $898.50 plus closing cost. Second reading.
Pulis makes a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 17.
Special ordinance amending Chapter 15 by adding Article 12 Self-Storage Facility Accommodations Tax to the Rock Island Code of Ordinances. Second reading.
Spaghetti moves the table until December 14th in order to receive more input from two large rent self-storage entities that email the city council members after four o'clock this afternoon.
There is second or is it gonna fail for a second? All right. It fails, no, no second.
Pulis makes a motion to approve the ordinance.
Swanson seconds.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti?
No.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Four one, motion carries.
Item 18.
Claims. A, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment to David G. Morrison, Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of $14,218.45 for legal services rendered between October 1st and October 31st, 2020.
Swanson moves to allow the claim.
Pulis will second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Spaghetti?
Yes.
Alderman Sw, Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 19.
Claims for the week of October 23rd through October 29, 2020, in the amount of $549,836.80 for the weeks of October 30th through November 5th, 2020, in the amount of $465,321.45. And payroll for the weeks of October 19th through November 1st, 2020, in the amount of $1,488,230.25.
Moves to allow the claims and payroll. This is Alderman Parker.
Swanson seconds.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 20.
Report from the Police Department regarding the bids for their 2021 dry cleaning contract, recommending the bid be awarded to Burke Cleaners, Rock Island, Illinois, for $11,452.50 with the option for two one-year extensions.
Now, Pulis will move to accept the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Parker seconds.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
I would like to make a comment because I've looked at these contracts and it looks like a, a lot of the money. But if you look at the breakdown of the per officer expense, it's really not, it's, it's pretty inexpensive. And it is a, a part of a contract, negotiated contract. So.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 21.
Report from the Police Department regarding a resolution in an updated multi-jurisdictional law enforcement agreement for mutual aid.
Swanson moves to approve the resolution as recommended and authorize the police chief to execute. to execute the agreement between the City of Rock Island and member agencies listed.
Pulis will second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Spurgittas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 22.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a new resolution updating the grant number information as required by HUD to allow the city to accept the grant transfer.
Pulis will make a motion to adopt the resolution as recommended and authorize the mayor to sign the necessary paperwork.
Geenan, second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? There are none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Spurgittas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 23.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the proposed HUD CDBG CV funding allocations.
Spurgittas moves to approve the allocations as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the sub-recipient agreements.
Swanson, second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Spurgittas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 24.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request from Kerry Pinozzo to divide his property at 4141 45th Avenue from zoned R1 one-family resident in order to create an undeveloped lot that will be available for sale.
Parker will move to approve the final plan as recommended.
Second. Been moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Spurgittas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 25.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding a 10-year intergovernmental support agreement with the Rock Island Arsenal to provide them extra additional electrical maintenance, sanitary sewer, lift-to-station operation, and water treatment and distribution operation services.
Alderman Parker will move to accept the IGSA agreement with the Rock Island Arsenal as recommended and authorize the mayor to execute the contract documents.
Pulis will second.
Moving second. Any discussions?
This is Alderman Geenan. This is great news. Good job.
Yes, it is. Working partnership with the Arsenal.
Sir Mayor Thompson, this is Colonel Allison from Rock Island Arsenal, listening in, been listening in the whole night. Appreciate you guys discussing this and considering this, continuing work that was started earlier by Colonel Marr, and looking forward to working with you and the team.
Thank you very much. We look forward to it also, continuing that partnership, along with the garbage and recycling that we work with. So thank you. It's a pleasure. There's no further discussion, we'll do roll call.
Alderman Spurgittas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 26.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the wastewater treatment plant capacity management, operations, and maintenance, CMOM program, recommending the contract be awarded to CDM Smith, Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of $49,500.
Pulis will make a motion to approve the selection as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Parker will second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Just for a point of order, I mean, just for a point of information, this is a mandatory requirement for, for our, for our water treatment plant. So, I mean, it's, I looked at it and I thought, well, you know, why are we doing this? And I saw that it was federally mandated, so, okay.
As usual. It is. All right. Roll call, please.
Alderman Spurgittas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 27.
Report from the City Clerk's Office regarding a request from the St. Patrick Society Quad Cities USA to hold their annual parade on Saturday, March 13th, 2021.
Alderman Parker will move to approve the request as written and adopt the resolution.
Pulis will second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I'm sure this implies everything's going to be conditional upon COVID restrictions by then.
Yes, they do realize that there may be COVID restrictions. They also are looking at the possibility of having it later in the spring if COVID doesn't allow for March 13th.
As I read that, does that mean that they are ready to cancel it if need be with regard to the restrictions?
Yes.
Okay.
Cancel or postpone it to a later date.
Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Spurgittas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Item 28, other business.
I have two, Your Honor.
Sure, go for it.
The first one, to my fellow Marines out there, a happy birthday tomorrow for 245 years, Marine Corps Birthday, and the following day, a big thank you to our veterans in Rock Island for their service.
Well said. Anybody else have any, anything else they wish to speak about? I guess I got two things. One, I just want to, once again, say the condolences and everything else to our city manager, Randy Tweet. I know he's online here and participating, but his father passed away this last week, and so our condolences go out to him and his family. It's a loss when you lose someone especially that close. And so our prayers are with you. Second of all, I guess, and associated even with that, I guess, continue to remind people, wear masks, social distance, wash your hands, and let's see if we can kick this thing in the tail. It looks like a vaccine may be coming out here soon, but we'll see how that goes. But until then, please, let's listen to the mandates that are out there and, and play along with the rules. And like I say, we hopefully can kick this thing in the tail and get it beat in the near future. But, so thank you very much. Anybody else have anything?
I would just like to thank the Rock Island businesses who are adhering to our mitigation restrictions. I know that it's a sacrifice to them, and I, I just want to publicly thank them for adhering to it. And for those who are choosing not to adhere to it, I wish that you would reconsider your decision-making for the betterment of the citizens of Rock Island, because we are all in this together. And the only way we're going to get through this is if we all work together and support each other.
That is correct. Well said. But we definitely, once again, have that sympathy for the, the business owners. They're struggling, and we need to, once again, I guess with that, I will speak, that we can go support our local businesses, bars, restaurants, et cetera, whether it be outdoor dining or drinking. But even if the weather's not right, you can buy gift certificates from those operations. You can buy food to go for you, your family, extended family. So let's, once again, continue to support the businesses in any which way possible so they can survive and be here once we, we kick this thing. So please solicit, patronize the businesses in Rock Island and help them out. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved in second. I assume there's no discussion on that. Roll call, please.
Alderman Spurgittas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Geenan?
Aye.[1793.04]